Right.
You heard yourself?
Yeah. It was a tough one, trust me, but I got it done.
It was hot to do too.
Yep.
I was, I was thinking about your brother.
Well, I was glad to get home.
Yeah, yeah.
Few weeks after the last time we talked to the car wash, wanted to check it out. Yeah. They use that. My car was filthy with, you know, pollen and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Chat, I've used it a few times.
I want to go through it in the sun in the car because you'll either love it or be terrified. I'm not sure which yet.
Most kids like it. They think my kids throw it. The dog freaks out. It's just a dog threw there once on accident.
This is what you're gonna need.
No, just stop on the way home, move him somewhere. So he was not happy for that two minutes.
You good?
Thank you, Greg.
A question before I start, this, this isn't live streaming anymore, is it?
We are live streaming to you.
To YouTube. Okay. I'll try to remember that, but we're not taking questions. On YouTube. Hold it up. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Oh, you ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Euclid Township Planning Commission Meeting, June fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Please rise for the President's Legion.
I plan to lead this city to the Republic of the United States of America. And see the Republic, which stands one nation under God, and in this all, we remember here in this world.
Hi, again, good evening, everyone. Um, I was just informed that this is live YouTube. No questions will be taken online, only in person. Uh, with that, uh, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our April second meeting? Any questions or corrections?
No.
No, and I have a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pushing passes. Okay, and we'll open up this evening. Good evening to Calvary Chapel, Chester Springs.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, my name is Eric Christakis. This is, uh, I think our fourth trip back before you, uh, and hopefully finally, um, tonight, we're here on behalf, as you said, of Calvary Chapel in Chester Springs for seeking a preliminary and final land development approval for their project at two seventeen, two nineteen, and two twenty while Downland Forge Road. You may recall that in two thousand twenty-three, the township, uh, re-zoned this parcel so that it was all within the PC District. In two thousand twenty-four, uh, the Church of King of National Use Approval, um, and this year, we've applied for their land development approval to complete that process. Um, with me here tonight, any representatives from the church, uh, these are the same team you had last time, Andy Davis on behalf of the church, Justin Miller from Howl Engineering is our civil meeting, Guy DiMartino from the drop-in diva, that's how I have it here. So, um, one item that I'll point out, about two items. One is this project's phased. Justin and Andy will walk me through what that process looks like and what phase anyone will involve. Uh, the second item, it is not civil related, but it came up in Dan's review letter, so I'll just mention it at the outset. We do intend to include photovoltaic, uh, solar panels in this project. We don't want to put them in the parking lot. We wouldn't put them on the building. Um, the reason for that, it has to do, and he can give more details, but it's maintenance, it's security, it's a lot of different factors. But we do want to incorporate them. The architecture is not done for the building yet. So, um, our intention or our ask would be to carry that forward as a condition of building permits so that we come to the township and demonstrate that we've incorporated photovoltaic panels into the architecture design in the way that we're representing, thankfully, we will do so. Um, or in the alternative, and my client has asked me to say this because of the current environment, if there's some supply chain disruption, tariff issue, or unavailability of photovoltaic panels at that point, we would just ask that we have the option to present reasonable cause to the township why we're not implementing them at that time. Uh, perhaps with an expectation that we would do so in the future if they become a horrible idea. Um, that's the only sort of caveat to that, but we do want to implement them themselves. So, uh, with that, um, I know that the, the commission's practice is to go through Dan's letter, uh, line by line, so we're happy to do that. I, I just wanted to throw that out there so that we don't spend a lot of time chasing our tails on what it turns out. All right. Uh, so with that, I'll defer to national staff.
Okay. You're on, Dan.
I am looking for my review letter. I, some reason now they printed everything out.
What, a hard copy? Here, do you want?
Yeah, would you like to be, go through, uh, the key items in the letter? Or you want to go through everything, or I want items?
Um. Yeah, let's, let's go through the, 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 uh, the main items that we need to.
Okay. Um, so page two of my review letter here, um, uh, zoning section, uh, number seven. Um, here, the, um, there are notes, uh, that need to be added to the plan, um, regarding, uh, the breakdown of how the building was, uh, broken, uh, set up there. They put it in their response letter, but those notes were not added to the plan. So that's just a, a, a cleanup item for them, or at least I didn't see it on the plan. Okay. Um, comment number seven B, um, is they are, um, the applicant has indicated they are in the process. This is related to the conditional use number, condition number four, and they are supposed to explore options for off, off, uh, site parking. And, um, they are in the process of pursuing formal arrangements for off-site parking. Um, and, uh, and I believe the township got a letter from the Calvary, uh, group here to Target, uh, making that request for, for off-site parking. Um.
We did receive a copy that's stated in February. Uh, I do just want to also note that shared parking does require triple exception approval from the zoning hearing board as well. So once, if MYNA will formalize that, um, you will need to go through that.
Understood.
Okay.
Uh, the plan that issued is, you will apply.
Okay.
As far as exploration, we've had, we've had no response. Um, we've had positive conversations with some of the other surrounding vendors to go through, to go through the law. Trick for there is that there are existing tenant relationships, um, that never enough itself near the interest. And if as of when they do, the church is interested and expresses interest, there's, you know, as we go forward, there's kind of a mutual interest that allows us, the tenant just can't prevent this. So, uh, we hope that there will be movement on that in the future. And as we know, we've asked for money or redress the money for the disciple law out of that portion of, if, 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 if as of when it's necessary to show.
Are you implying that the tenant will change or?
Yeah, so the, the, the Walgreens, uh, if it was a Walgreens, it's still Freddie Willes Walgreens and some of these, now the end of all. That whole process is going to have to work out. Either Dollar General may leave eventually, or another tenant may come in, uh, they turn over with something. So when that happens, we not just.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I don't know if this is the right time or not, but in terms of, um, parking sharing across the street over to Target, let's say, and I understand they haven't answered, but would that be intended for, I'll say, regular weekly usage or just really big event overflow?
Purpose of this project is to park what your juice on its own ball. Right? That's the whole point of what we're doing. We acknowledge there may be significant events, weddings, things like that, that attract more people to the church room nearer than we have.
But on a regular Sunday, we're not talking about significant pedestrian traffic across Downland Forge Road.
Because it's surge.
Right.
This is something you're telling me.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, also in conditional use, condition number four, um, the applicant should provide methods of parking for surge events. Um, there are notes added to the plan right now that says that they, the church maintains volunteer team for onsite parking and traffic, um, uh, direction, supplements with professional services like Flagler Forest when needed. And they'll coordinate with neighbors for additional parking and provide shuttle services when off-site parking is used. Um, so that was what they needed to do as part of one of the condition. They've added notes to the plan. And, um, my opinion was it satisfies that requirement.
Got it.
Um, comment number eight, um, is referencing back to conditional use number ten. Um, and, uh, the applicant shall document the plans for support the township's ready for one hundred initiative. And, um, uh, as, as, uh, Ari has indicated here, um, they are, um, some examples were solar EV charging stations, previous pavement. Um, and, uh, the plan didn't, um, indicate that, but now they're proposing, they're telling us that they're going to incorporate solar in it as, as needed to that. So I guess somehow or another should be incorporated into any kind of recommendation, um, for you, for you guys. And obviously you have the right to ask for anything more or any other, other issues, but, um, that was one of the suggested things for them to look at.
Right.
Um, the environmental impact assessment report, uh, there was an outstanding item related to the woodland management plan. Uh, the, uh, the woodland management plan has been updated here to talk about, um, uh, action items need to be done for, uh, for the woodland management area, for the wooded area on the western side of the property. And, um, uh, I'm just asking for those items to be added to the plan. I assume.
No, no objection.
Uh, subdivision land development ordinance, um, there's a waiver for, um, a requirement for you, uh, a primary plan. There are less than to deal with primary slash final. I think we've talked about that in the past and, um, uh, we have no objection to that. Um, crosswalks and sidewalks, um, so, uh, conditional use, uh, approval, condition number seven requires the applicant to either construct or escrow a mount um, to provide a construction of sidewalk extension to the existing sidewalk located on the adjacent property, which was the Dollar, Dollar General store here next, uh, next door here. And, uh, they've done an estimate which seems reasonable, or twenty thousand dollars to construct that approximately three hundred linear feet. Um, I guess it's, uh, unclear to me here, and I, I didn't quite follow here earlier. You're, you're going to escrow that, but is that going to be constructed at what point? It's in the public right? So is there any reason why it, it doesn't, that doesn't tie into the tenant on that property, correct?
Right. Okay. That would be a really sharp.
You want to.
Yeah.
Uh, to the extent the township is the authority to do so.
Did the public right away?
Yeah. And since we can handle it.
Yeah, and, and, and Andy, if you get it done for less than that, I mean, it's, it's obviously tiers benefit here. We don't, we don't, we don't necessarily want to go hire contractors, build it, we'll pay the ground wage rates and uh, and, and everything else for it. So I think it would be preferably for us to have it just make it sharp.
Yeah.
Um, NPD has permit, comment number six, um, still pending.
I'd expect a technical review any day now. We're in their expedited pilot program review period, so we've got quick turnarounds.
So that's a third-party review process and they should hopefully get that, get that soon. Um, stormwater, um, management, uh, we, uh, we had some, uh, comments about, um, uh, about some soil testing. There was one of some testing in one of the beds where, um, it was actually located outside the bed and testing was done before the final design. Um, the applicant has agreed to complete the additional testing for bed number, uh, bed number two. Um, the comment number on page five, comment number V, um, just loads, let me reread that one here, all right? Complete, um, oh, the, uh, the, the stormwater manager for this facility's got, uh, three large underground sebage beds. Um, and, uh, those beds are typically not installed or not open for to take water until such time as the drainage area to them are fully stabilized. And, uh, we just were looking for additional notes, um, to, uh, to make sure that they stabilize those areas, that all the grass areas leading to it as soon as possible, so those beds can be opened and functioning and we don't have runoff issues during construction. So, um, I was just asking for some notes, notes to be added in the plan to, uh, detail that.
Snap, no problem. Add in those notes.
Okay.
Um, we had a stormwater comment about the, um, drainage area to one of the inlets. It's pretty minor, minor drainage comment. That shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue, but should be corrected here on the plan. I'm sure that won't be a problem. Uh, comment number C, the C five there, um, there was a, uh, an omission in the latest report for the, um, pond reports, um. Uh, I think everything seems to be okay compared to the last ones. It just was, uh, I accidentally missed, uh, omitted out of the, uh, current stormwater reporting. Um, top of page six, um, there was just some, uh, clarification needed on some construction details. Um, right below that was the discharge location analysis, um, the, uh, the water for the runoff for the site, um, uh, outlets to, uh, to the northwest corner of the property and drains down into, uh, towards the pond on Mr. Myers's property next door. Um, uh, and, uh, we had some comments about, um, about the, uh, making sure that there isn't a problem with that discharge. They've got a level spreader design and, um, and we just have some cleanup items to do on the, uh, stormwater report to make sure that that's, uh, all documented and that, that it's gonna, they're gonna mitigate any erosion issues that they arise. Any, any issues from the applicant?
No issues, Dan.
Um, storm sewer conveyance system, there were a couple just discrepancies with, um, uh, profiles and, um, and, um, storm, um, um, the stormwater report, um, and, uh, that we're asking them to re- revisit here, um, for, for that. But that's the on lock conveyance system. Uh, next one's the operation and maintenance agreement that, uh, they'll have to sign and record with the final plans. Um, sidewalks, um, so, uh, ultimately here about the, uh, conditions, they're talking, uh, the conditional use had certain conditions about exploring um, crosswalks and sidewalks on adjacent properties. We talked about the sidewalks, um, already for the Dollar General sites. Um, the, uh, we also had recommended that they, um, I guess further talk about the, uh, crosswalks, uh, on, um, on, uh, on Downland Forge Road there. Um, we, uh, internally here, we discussed with the township traffic engineer, um, about the, uh, their opinions on a crosswalk at the target parking lots. And, um, ultimately here was our opinion or his opinion here for the traffic engineer, and I concur with it, is that there's adequate site distance to provide a, uh, crosswalk of, uh, Eagleview Boulevard, I mean, sorry, Downland Forge Road at the, uh, the, the western i- i- intersection area with the Target parking lot, where Terry was pointing to on the plan there. Um, so, um, we think that that can be incorporated in and I guess want to have a dialogue and with the planning commission and see if you guys thought it was a good idea and if so, um, uh, um, have the applicant, uh, potentially incorporate that into the project.
What you guys feeling? We really would like to, like to see that. Think that would be, benefit the, the community and the church.
So, so the applicant's perspective is we would be fine putting in ADA ramps on the north and south side and putting in, uh, the, uh, thermoplastic painting for, for crosswalk. Maybe with like triangular signage, right, for where the crosswalk is. What we want to avoid is a more, uh, robust crossing facility, right, like with mast arms and blinking lights that come from unknown parts of the country elsewhere that we have to ship in. Uh, we want to avoid something on leave like that. So to the extent that there's just, if it's just a crosswalk, it's just the ADA ramps on each side of the road and the painting, we would be happy to do that, um, particularly since the township seems convinced that, that it's an acceptable location. If that's the, the planning commission or the township's decision, we'd be willing to do that. We just want to avoid a, a larger project than that. Uh, so that, that's the applicant's perspective.
So discussions, discussions initially here with the township traffic engineer, um, uh, we did have that, asked them about the need for, um, uh, um, any kind of flashing, um, pedestrian signs, um, in there for, for that area. Um, I, I don't think it's been determined whether or not it would meet those warrants or not. I know the applicant's traffic engineer is here. I don't know if he's, uh, he's evaluated that or had any opinions or recommendations or on, on whether or not, um, that would, uh, that would warrant, um, need for any kind of, uh, flashing, flashing signals at that area for pedestrians.
Like, good evening, Guy DiMartino, TPD. Um, yeah, regarding that, there were some minimum criteria. Um, not really specifically warrants for when, when you trigger the need for flashing signal. That's more of kind of engineering judgment. Working through some geometry factors, this is speed to the roadway, anticipated pedestrians. Um, so that's something we could work with, with staff, uh, on to determine. Um, but to, to the point, uh, for this application, we're willing to do the crosswalk, um, but once it becomes a bigger project and it's delayed and triggers the need for a signal that then triggers PennDOT involvement and becomes a much, much bigger project that this, this application cannot burden.
So is that a state road? It is not a state road, but any, any sort of signal would require PennDOT, even though it is not a state road.
PennDOT, PennDOT controls that do not allow you to put signals up anywhere without their approval. They want to make sure all the signals are, are, um, are, meet state standards and so that you don't have somebody putting up purple and green ones and red and yellow and anything else.
So what the applicant proposes, inasmuch as either the township engineer or our traffic engineer decides that that kind of device is necessary, we, we would be willing to provide a fee and leave for the value of that, then the township could do whatever facility it thinks is right at that location. Uh, at that time, we can, we can do it that way as well, uh, if, if it turns into something that requires more, uh, resources to get them.
Are there other instances of signaling in other areas of the township? Like that for crosswalks?
Devon Drive.
Devon Drive.
Devon Drive. I see that crosswalk. Yeah, lower parking lot area there to the, the, the fields. So that would be a similar, similar type scenario where you have a pedestrian crosswalk where you hit the button and it flashes and people, okay, have to stop.
So we're not talking like big overhead signs. We're just talking about pedestal that would have like on Devon Drive, right? That's not overhead. That's just.
Yeah, I, I have to remember exactly what that looks like, but that's just, I think, like the pedestals with the, the flashing, flashing sign that are there. So, 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 yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, the township has signal contractors that maintain our signals and can do that work. And, um, I, I guess ultimately here, the, the, if they're willing to, to pay a fee in lieu for that, I don't have a problem, problem with that, in my opinion, um, here for, for that, if it's warranted. If it's not warranted, if all the, if the traffic engineers, I'm not a traffic engineer, right? The traffic engineers come back and say, hey, really, it's, it's for the pedestrians and the site distance there, it's not an issue. Then, um, then, 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 uh, no, no, no big deal. But if it's warranted and says, yes, we think it should be installed, then, um, uh, it's, the purpose of it is to provide, as the conditional use orders came back through, is look at arrangements for crosswalk explorations and so on. So, okay, so you guys are good.
Wait, can I, just, just as a point of clarity, throughout this entire process, we've been emphatically clear, we don't want people parking at Target. Anything you do related to Target is not for us. That is solely for you. So whatever you're imposing for us to cross over to Target is solely at your desire and discretion. We don't think it's a safe place. You've got a lot of different lanes coming together. You've got three from one side, four from the other, three from the others. Uh, you have people coming out of Target, looking left, looking right, cars going left, right? We don't think it's a good idea. Um, so you're not doing this for us, and please don't think you are. We don't want it. We don't want our people parking there. We don't want people trying to bring children across that intersection. There's just a lot going on there. Uh, to that being said, if the township says it is a condition of our approval that we have to do it, certainly, we're going to work with you on that. That's, that's not what we're objecting to, but please don't think this is for us and don't think that we want it because we do not.
So, so dur- during, during the whole or earlier processes from the day one of the meetings, this is not just for off, off-site parking. This is not us to promote, um, off-site parking. It was basically trying to make Euclid Township in this area pedestrian-friendly and that people are going to be walking. There's a walking trail all along Downland Forge Road. So this isn't just for the off-site, off, off-site parking. This is for pedestrian access throughout this, this Lineville, like greater Lineville area here and, uh, and, and, and providing pedestrian access. This is somebody coming from the seasons who says, I'm going to walk to, walk to, walk to church here, and they're, they're not going to walk up to Wendy's, up to Eagleview Boulevard, cross over and they come back down along Dollar General. Um, this was to provide a pedestrian access. Does anyone do that now, today?
It's, it's not, you're not able to.
No sidewalk.
Not able to safely right now.
Right, but I mean, they're not doing that without it.
You made comments about some large events where you may need overflow parking. If, if you need overflow parking, how are you going to control them not going over the dart to park?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So we've been in this township since two thousand and five. The, the township here has twenty years of history with us. Twenty years, I presume, of not having a problem, twenty years of us being faithful and good stewards over this. So what we've done in the past is when it comes to that, is we'll talk to a business further down in Eagleview Boulevard and we'll park down and, down in there and then we just shuttle people up. But it's not, I mean, you've, nothing's changing. We're not changing how we can do church, how we do absolutely anything. We're literally just addressing natural growth at our park. Uh, so relative to those events, it'll be no different than it was before, but, but frankly, we've always been able to manage and maintain it. And generally, when we have to, uh, uh, you know, if it's a large event, we'll get the staff to park elsewhere and everyone else comes and simply parks. Uh, you know, that's how we've done it. We have, you know, traffic guys to come out and it's worked so far. Good, uh, we haven't had a single issue. And you have twenty years of history to look back on and judge whether or not we've been competently handled.
Yeah, I don't think it's a problem with the past. I think we're trying to look to the future because things are, just keep growing and growing everywhere. So, uh, I think it's a feeling that this would just help. I agree with you say it's a busy road and everything. Maybe that's why we want the crosswalk there so we can get people safely across.
Yeah, I think, I, you know, we understand the township's decision that there's two issues here. One is off-site parking for our use and the other is sort of the general pedestrian network within the township. That's what this crosswalk is meant to do. That's why we feel like it's appropriate to kind of limit the exposure of the church for the cost of it, um, to that kind of either a basic crosswalk or contribution to a larger project of the township.
Is there a sidewalk on the north side of Downland Forge Road proposed as part of this?
No, that, the.
Along the property frontage?
Yes.
That was discussed.
Right, but it wasn't evaluated. It wasn't.
Correct. I think the slopes were.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about doing that and having a crosswalk down at the, near the park. Is, is there?
For the people who would potentially be coming from seasons and walking up this direction, for instance, something like that, is there internal pedestrian space within the parking? So such that if you had a crosswalk instead of at the top of the hill where there's the, the edge from Target, which I agree is a dangerous intersection? If it doesn't make more sense to put a crosswalk down at the bottom of the hill?
The site distance isn't, isn't, isn't good down there.
Isn't, okay.
There's a crest, there's a crest on the Downland Forge Road just west of the Target parking lot entrance.
So when you're coming over the hill, you can't see.
Coming over the, we can't see. So it was determined and discussed at past meetings that the, uh, providing a crosswalk down at the, at the western side of the site here, um, toward, by the park is, is not a piece of logic. So this one was like, hey, we thought, they, we, township asked the traffic engineer to evaluate that and they came back and said, yes, there's adequate site distance to cross at the Target and they wanted, they said on the, on the western side of the entrance, because the eastern side of the Target entrance, people have the right turn and they basically have the, they're pulling out and they're just looking left and I'm not looking at the entrance in front of them, but the people making left turn to look, have a look both ways. And, uh, and ultimately here is, is the, the, the traffic engineer came back and thought it was okay to put one at that location.
Okay.
So, so realistically here, that's what the consultants have looked at and said, you had a, there was a condition of the condition of, uh, conditional use approval to explore that. And, um, so ultimately it's up to the planning commission whether or not you'd like to recommend that a crosswalk be incorporated and at that location, the applicant's willing to build it and, uh, and, and end up paying, um, uh, um, paying a fee for the installation of the signal work here, which, um, I, I wouldn't have a rejection with from, from my end, so.
I just have one question about the traffic study in general. Does, is the accident, uh, rate included in that report? Is that something that's standardly added to that?
Yeah, so I'm looking through, uh, when we did do the traffic study for, for this application, um, there was no more than, sorry, my numbers from the traffic study. Yeah, it doesn't look like there was any more than one.
One crash per year, uh, informal crash per year at that intersection. So I really want to factor it in this discussion.
It's enough.
So.
That's the data.
So where do we stand on this then? I mean, are you guys willing to work with it, work with the town? Okay.
Solve the, the basic crosswalk. Or if the government wants something more to provide a value at base crosswalk in the load.
Right. For the shop, okay. Okay.
Sounds good.
Can I say?
Yes.
Probably will curtail a lot of other questions I have. But is this entire project in will be under an escrow established for all site improvements? They will draw down on the escrow as normal?
Uh, yep, just like every other project, yes.
Just, just wanted to. That includes the, um. Initial specifications includes the O and A agreement as well?
Uh, correct. So what we ask, we, we, we escrow within Euclid Township here and generally it's from most municipalities, some, some stretch. But we escrow the stormwater management, erosion controls, landscaping, all the public or quasi-public improvements. We do not escrow their individual private parking lot, uh, the dollar figures for the private parking lot, but any improvements out of. Downforce road and public. Or improvements that affects others like the stormwater, the storm property. And is going to then flood neighboring property that, that those items are asked.
So then, so then my question or actually my comment becomes of this. Uh, review letter by your company. Um, I come up with one, two. I come up with. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen different items in here that are unresolved or unaddressed that relate to. Uh, stormwater management. And, and you're real, the civil part of this project. So where? Where are we going to be? In this process, I mean, it just, it just continues to be. That they come back and.
So the applicant's asking today to move this on from you guys and looking for a recommendation for preliminary final approval. Um, they have addressed a handful of comments tonight during our discussions. And then it's up to you guys to decide whether or not you find that satisfactory. Um, from my opinion here, um, they are, the items, the stormwater comments are minor nature and has notes to plans. There's nothing in here planning related from the big picture. We will make sure before the plan is recorded. That those items are addressed. Um, so if you're satisfied with the other responses for them, then you guys have to make a decision whether or not you're willing to. To move this on to the next, uh, to, to, to the board of supervisors.
Still agree for a recommendation with a will comply to all the items that are still left open in here.
Correct.
Just want to make sure it's your recommendation.
I have no, I have no objection here. I don't want to pin you down for this here if you have a different opinion on it, but I don't have objection from an engineering perspective. Of moving this on. With, with whatever conditions the planning commission.
Just trying to cut through a little bit.
Yep.
Was that all your recommendations?
Uh, that is all mine. The, uh, the head of, uh, turning trend templates looked good to me. I had us the fire marshal to make sure he was okay with it. And then we had them, um, a label for an ease, easement for the, uh. Um, uh, one of the easements had a missing, uh, distance, um, to be shown. Uh, but other than that, that those were, those were all my comments.
So I want to take another bite of the apple.
Okay.
So we have the third call flower. They've got a bunch of items in there. It seems pretty simple to me. A couple of them were just, it looks like they transpose the five and an eight. In the planning list. So that, that looked pretty simple. Um. The other question I have is how will we incorporate? Ca- uh, counties. Bullet points on. These of the landscapes. Into whatever recommend, recommendation we make. You've got, uh, essentially eleven bullet points from the county. On this project. Not all of them are. Uh. Synchronized with. Your recommendations or plans depictions. So.
Um, I, I don't think, um. I, I had skimmed through this before. I don't think anything jumped out at me as that was creating an issue that. The county planning commission is, makes recommendations to municipality. Um, here for, uh, for things for them to consider. Um, I, I, uh, you guys might have read this more in depth than I did, but I don't think there was anything in here that was, um. That was, uh, that, that needed to be incorporated that we, we didn't cover or, or such.
Would it be, I don't know, wanting to ask for response from the applicant? To address. County's recommendations in some manner? I'm not saying that they have to comply with them as at least what they acknowledge that they've considered what been written to them.
Yeah, I mean, has the applicant, have you got down through the town, jam in some letter? Do you have any?
Yes, that's what we, I have. I think I've. This is what kind of sound the top.
Right.
This is out in terms of. Guarantee recommendations and suggestions. I don't think that what we've done. At least, uh, I see the. Uh, you've got good engineers who.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is that your engineers? Read this, digest. And respond if there's anything. You know?
If I can add, I'd just say, I think the only thing that hasn't covered with comments from Mr. Daly for the use. Is there was suggestion of how a parking lot was laid out. I don't think they, in reviewing it, the county planning commission realized the great, the great difference. And that was. One that really had. Was something that was, that's here or in the.
And it's not a machine, our friends of the county, what they're being used for.
Understood.
We paying attention to them.
No, but they're trying to, they're trying to incorporate what their guidelines are for all, all the development in Chester County. And it's, 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 it's meaningful in that it's mindful. They're trying to, they're trying to. Make more homogenous decisions that. Believe alleviate this piecemeal development that you get over three hundred years. You know, in a, in a township like this. It's, it's appreciated in my mind. I think it's worth. Reading and understanding and a minute.
We, we do second, I think it has been. Refuge island in the middle of Downforce. That was one of the, the comments in the category. So it's not something.
I don't know what there is for lighting on there. It's, I mean, that's, that pedestrian walkway isn't has, is gonna have some. Minimal, minimal lighting, I mean, you know. In December, it's dark at four thirty.
Yeah, I know, I know in that area, we do have, um, some of the greater Lionville lighting out there. I've, I've incorporated in it and at that spot here.
But that's one of the elements we discussed. Right.
Thank you.
We, we did address a lot of these. I just read through, I just read through the all of them. Correct, correct. No, I got you. But to your, to your point, we did actually address these without having this, you know, we brought up all of these conversations for the most part, except for, like you said, redesigning with. I forget which caught him. I just read it. It's. Yeah. So, I mean, we did. Hammer a lot of that out. Um, you know, we, we, we asked you guys to evaluate using grass, you know, all the other different, um, methods, so.
Or the town or the engineer has done, you know, stormwater stuff, stuff that's been done here.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments from the board?
Can we, can we circle back on the ready for one hundred initiative? Um, you open to talk about that a little bit. What, what are the obligations from? From that condition as it pertains to, um. The applicant's plans for, for that initiative?
So the, the condition was to incorporate. And then it gave like. EV charging stations, uh, I think also mentioned that same second. Uh, we talked about horse fading.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, EV charging stations are, are, we just don't feel appropriate for this particular use. The, but we do want to put in total of air panels, solar panels. Uh, we just don't want to put along a park. So when we come into building permits for the building. We will demonstrate as a condition of this approval that we have total of air panels on the building. Or we'll demonstrate to the township why it's tiny. That, that's what I was.
Who determines at what time now? That's all. If it's feasible.
It would be when we come to. We come just for building. Okay. That we either incorporated them or explained why what happened to their sets.
Right. Do we have a, do we have an understanding of the intent? I guess, so then maybe this has to go back to the. To, to the other body, but of the, to the commission, but to understand the, the intent of that. Requirement then, because they're not. It doesn't sound like they're, they're requiring you to get. One hundred percent of renewable energy be fed by twenty thirty-five per that program, right?
We are, they asked us to look at implementing them or incorporate those elements.
Yeah.
We are.
I was just wondering if it's for the sake of visibility, which may be why they would want to book parking lot, but. Visibility of the, of the, of the installation.
That, I don't understand.
So that people see the solar. Because if, if they're on the roof, like, particularly.
The Chester County Planning Commission who made a recommendation to incorporate solar panels, panels into the parking lot area. Um, so the, 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 the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors condition. Just is, um, is asking, had asked the applicant to incorporate something to help them reach that ready for one hundred initiative. Um, so there wasn't any hard fasts, like you need to do this much, you need to do what, whatever. It was basically, hey. We want people to consider that option here to, to, to do solar or EV charging stations or something to help them meet that, but.
Okay.
But the, 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 I don't think the township in the conditional use process at all had said we were looking for you to put. Um, um, the, uh, parking lot solar panels in.
So you're just going to look at doing it on the roof? So, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hopefully you'll save energy, money. And for the EV charging stations, I understand you guys aren't a business or anything. It might be convenient for some of your. Yeah, congregation at some point, but. That's something for you to look at. Okay.
Thanks. I want to better understand the context of it before we moved on completely, so. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? Okay. Can I have a recommendation? A motion? Mr. McDonald, would you please make a?
I knew that we, uh. Move forward with preliminary final. Land development plan, I mean, it all the tools were the, uh. I'll reach out to spring, just springs of church. Uh, with the situation that they are, will comply with EV Walsh letter of May twenty-seven. We're called letter of. Bowman letter of April twenty-ninth. HRG letter of April sixteen, oh yeah, thank you very much. Third call letter, April eleventh, fire marshal email, it'd be May thirteenth, which I know comments. And police department of January thirty, which also.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor? Yep.
Two of those.
Correct.
Conditions. Happy to just give you the language for it. The app proposes they construct a basic law, 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 consisting of thermoclassic painting, uh, signage and ADA accessible ramps.
What number was that?
This is.
It's like the last page. But it's just up for discussion, so just this language needs to go in.
Right.
Discussion of the township attributed to you for the.
Because word covers that, Dan, don't you think? We don't need that.
Solar panels, the applicant will provide. Solar panels in the building construction of plants at the time of building permit. Uh. Or demonstrate to the township satisfaction that it's not economically feasible to leave so.
The last couple of words I don't really care for, but.
They were came up order to check.
Okay. Okay. Okay, with that, we added those two things to just.
That's going to be a part of the building permit, so it's going to be in the context of everything else that you're submitting, right?
Yes, yeah. It's a building for plans to show. EV panels on building.
Along with all of the other improvements within that.
Yes, submit something.
That's fine.
Right.
Okay, so we'll go back. We have a, uh, motion for recommendation plus two additions on that. And I do have a second on that. And then all in favor?
I.
I posed? Okay. Thank you. Hopefully we can get moving along there, huh? All right, second on the list. Tonight. Love car wash? How you doing this evening?
Good, how are you, Mr. Chair?
Good.
Call on plan.
Thank you.
So you're sometimes. Thank you so much.
So you were before us before and we went over some things. Have you taken care of a lot of the issues that we were? Dressed, addressing?
So I believe that we have. So again, Leonard asks here, welcome, it's there Harrison. This is for the property eighty fifty North Pottstown Pike. It's an existing Sunoco. Again, just by way of background, we're going to be shutting down the gas station aspect of it and just operating the car wash on there. Um, you are correct, Mr. Chairman, that we were before the planning commission, like we back at the end of April. Um, there were some outstanding, um, some outstanding information that was requested specifically in noise mitigation. Signage pass package, decimal certification, the lighting plan. We did provide all that to, uh, the townships. We did receive. Some feedback and additional review letters that we received this afternoon. Um, we did also from the last night that we were here, increased, I believe, two trees. Uh, again, this is a very odd shade of sight. Um, we did try to. Uh, or plant two more trees, uh, which Lindsay, who is the design engineer from Bowler, can get into greater detail, but. Again, just by way of background, that's, that's essentially where we are. So I'll turn it over to Lindsay. She's a star, she's a star of the show tonight.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for. Um, so as Leonard said, we, we submitted the lighting plan that had been asked for. Uh, we had some discussions about the trees. We also submitted the noise, um, information, um, for the vacuums. Um, there was a question about sewer as well and that was addressed with the sewer authority. They incorporated a letter into the packet, um, reviews. Um, we submitted a, our impact assessment. Um, and then. As Leonard stated, we did add, we had discussions about the tree and I think part of the discussion was. Whether there was a, a comment in the landscape review about potentially, since we're requesting a waiver for, um. The deficit of a few trees along both Pottstown Pike and South Village Avenue. Do we, um, put some trees within the right of way along Village Avenue? And we had discussed that. We, we decided that that would not be a. Um, a good idea, just that would be a public works nightmare. Uh, I think that was part of the conversation. So what we did do is we added a tree at the. Basically at the intersection of Pottstown Pike and South Village Avenue. So you'll see that on the rendering that you have in front of you. Um, and.
Which one's the new one? Sorry.
Yeah.
The right one or the left one?
There's.
Or the small one?
It's three.
Sorry, it's in the property line. I see it now. I was like, yeah.
Dang.
Correct.
There is another tree that we had on, we just added one. Yeah, just the one, no, it's back. There's another one along at the entrance point along Pottstown Pike. And then there's another one by, um. It would be the western end of the site as well. So those are the three trees that are counting towards. The frontage, um, the street tree calculation. There's six required. And I can go through, I just wanted to review with you that, that we also added, we discussed about the circulation. The last time that we were here around the existing canopy. Um, I think it was in particular. We were concerned, everyone was concerned. We were concerned, everyone was concerned about like cars stopping underneath the canopy. Um, on I guess would be the southern side of the canopy in between the canopy and the building. So we did add some no parking signs there. And then in the latest letter from the engineer. Um, there was also a request um. To add a few more signs. That we are fine with. I think it would have been no um. Keep right signs. Correct. So we're fine with adding. Um, and I believe these were like, those were the major changes. I can run through the plan and a little bit more detail if you all want, or go through the waivers that we were requesting as well.
Um, does everybody just want to hear the waivers?
Waivers are.
Before you jump away with the bypass lanes.
Sure.
The the one closest to the the current building. So the one technically going in the direct, the right direction. It says there's a concrete line on both sides of that. Is that raised up?
No. The concrete line, it's just.
Oh, concrete pavement. I'm sorry. I thought it was a curb line. I'm my apologies. Okay. So that's just the current conditions.
Correct. And then the the grayish grayish hatch that's over top is just the canopy.
Correct. Okay.
Real, real quick, um, so we don't have to spend a lot of time on the um, the site lighting review, and I will. Review letter three. And you're still lacking. Photometrics, a lot of stuff he's asking. So where are you with that? I mean, it's a very simple thing. Understand what is. We don't have, we don't have it yet. And it's very important to that area.
Yeah, so we had, we submitted the lighting plan right after we saw all of you last time. So we got our review letter back. And we actually resubmitted. On Monday to the township again, which is.
What date, what date is that?
Second. Um, and we.
Right, yeah, you gotta rebel up from June four that still says you're not.
So there's a few comments in there, and I think there was, um, it was, they were looking for a control box, which is.
Control.
Controls, and then also some electrical conduit and where that will come from. So that's something that. We will provide.
Right.
We have no problem.
Very simple to get received. Who's the one you're saying wedding?
W. It's not solar. I don't know.
That's okay.
W L. W L.
All right, well, whatever. So you just make that official.
Sure.
You know, it's just. But it's just check off the box. Keep on going.
Understood.
Mr. Chair, do you want us to go through the waiver requests? We can get all of our due letters. Um, that we have. Anything that's to be able to apply outside of things. Said in regard for laying back, that additional information filed with respect that they are having minor risk to be issues. Um, again, it'd be title letters and condition. And, you know, ladies and engineers satisfied.
Okay.
Does that reason?
So. So Dan, we're going through your things. They're saying they're okay with all your recommendations. Correct?
Yeah, and and most of mine are pretty minor in nature. Um, one thing that. Like, yeah. Please, um, Lucy, I know they sent in a noise information this week. I am not an expert here. I'm on your period of ability to run through what you're. If we're on it. On that noise, you you basically have. Here you can see that. Um, and uh, and there's um. Uh, the the we associated with those, I just want to make sure. Stratus, friendly properties and. And I know there was video skit that I did not. Um, I'd like for you guys to summarize that. The uh. For the uh.
Do you guys have those specs?
I'm the first one who's in. I I I do not have the technical information, be able to to provide any sort of summary to outside of what I have. Our copy, we didn't provide to the township. Um, and so it isn't for you, but I'm not going to try to stand up here and tell you that I know how to disseminate that information to you.
Okay. Do you have the information? You, yeah. It hasn't gotten us yet. That's what it means. It hasn't gotten us.
So you would have one down?
Yeah, sure. If you want to pass, you've got a copy, we can pass it down. Thank you. Will it have a V F D? Will the vacuum have a V F D?
Or for Mr. Chair.
Okay, there are major differences in terms of D B A between the version with the V F D and the one without V F D. I'd imagine in this kind of application, you'd really want it because you have such different demands, depending on how many people are using. The equipment at at different times. It's also not. Clear from here which which model you'd be going with, just because there's between ten and forty horsepower. The numbers don't change too significantly, but. That's. I I think just from looking at it from from my background and perspective, the the version. With the V F D is not too excessive in terms of, you know, from that back, you go a certain distance away and the sound is going to drop off. Um, because sound is exponential in terms of decibel. So. The one that does not, that's up in the eighties to the nineties, which is very loud. And even though there's no immediate residential properties, very close to it. Um, it it could be disruptive. Something I think we could still.
There is a. School next door.
That's daycare school.
That is, that is why I'm not concerned about people. My person was concerned about getting dropped. Yeah.
I doubt they're going to have the forty horsepower one here with eight stages, but that's ninety five dB without the V F D. But wasn't that within the building? There's some, or is that each individual units?
We don't know. One is there's one inside the building and one outside the unit.
Correct. So there is going to be one inside building, and then the other one is substantially away from that property line. At the current ingress and egress part, uh, in kind of that gray area right there, as you can see on the plan that's on the screen right now.
We talked about putting that inside. That's not ob- obviously an option then.
One of them is inside.
No, but this one, because this one's kind of in the driving lane.
That there's.
Okay. Okay.
Because that existing convenience store, we're shutting that down. And that's where that's going to be moved into the the one vacuum pump, if you will.
One of them is inside here. The other is right here. I mean, the good part is is it's not, it's, yeah, it's not next to. The, you know, adjoining neighbor that has the.
Give us a minute. They're kind of looking that over and kind of. Dan, do you have any other comments about the review letters?
So all of the nasty grounds. I I'm your favorite base. They did, they have submitted a signage uh submission.
Yeah, the sign package that was submitted, um. I'm still reviewing that as we speak, but all of the like permanent wall signs. Are okay. There are still a lot of the temporary signs that are on the site. And it looks like there's new electronic menu boards that were installed and not permitted.
So was currently on the site? Uh, and then the temporary ones you're saying are on the site now?
Correct.
So they should have been removed, so.
Yes, so I'm putting all that together with the sign package, so I can send that to.
I'm temporary sign from myself. I'll reiterate that to our client that they need to come down. And all.
So then how do we move forward with what you still have to work on with the sign package for them?
The sign.
Okay. Doesn't affect us then. Okay.
The signs are. That are. Permanent that are on the site. Uh.
So. Unless I want to say.
That's okay. I'll look at it later. I trust all you guys to.
These are all.
No.
So Dan, will you provide feedback on the noise? Give it. Desert. Not you, not you, but does. Your staff does not either. I was just, I was just curious if. Okay.
This was your.
Such a critical line.
And again, the the one thing I would just like to hammer home again is, and you're correct, right? I don't have that. Detailed information, um, but we are probably around two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet away from that property line. I don't. Think that it's going to be anymore. You know, I don't think that they're going to hear it anymore than cars driving down. The Pottstown Pike. Um, but again, you know, we can get that information.
It is significantly louder than the cars.
I would respectfully request that we don't continue, continue to move forward with. Um, recommendation for preliminary final, and if the staff has an issue. Uh, with the information that's provided, then we'll come back before the 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 board and or the commission. And kind of flush through that, or not even have to come back for the planning commission, just provide the information where the staff is is comfortable. Which is probably my official life.
Here. To. For about.
Is you reviewing it now?
Um, not yet.
So, okay, so as long as you're being be in compliance with the township and their recommendation for it.
Problem being sure that it's, you know, not going to be detrimental to the to the neighborhood. I just continue to move this forward.
Yeah. I don't want to slow it down either. I'm just, yeah.
And I understand your your concern, um, and I appreciate it. So just wanted to just throw that out there.
Just remind me, what are the hours again? The hours, the the vacuums are not twenty four seven. You can't just go up and use them anytime.
That's where you're not twenty.
Okay, okay. So the normal business shops.
So you should.
I think it's an eight years. Okay, that's fine.
It's going to come, yeah. Maybe that's correct.
It was actually short of for me.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a way to take it? Because. I presume the one inside the building takes care of all the ones under the canopy. The the unit, the vacuum unit inside the building takes care of all the ones that are in the canopy. And the this one will take care of all the ones along Route one hundred. Could you put it in a noise proofing box and put it over by the street that like the sign or the the tree or something and then? Sound enclosure?
And is the one outside an existing unit? That's going to be replaced, or is it?
You.
It will be a new new unit.
It's just if we're going to go over the threshold, if there's kids involved, you know, we would obviously like to shift it to the other end, I think, of the the property. Because the the western boundary is the one with the issue. But I just think putting it in a a noise cancelling box would just solve all the problems too.
It may, it may be cheaper just to put a have a client with a V F D on it.
Correct, or that or that too.
They're going to absolutely want to do that anyway, for a number of other reasons, like energy efficiency besides this noise, so. I I agree with kind of Tara's proposal. It just, we'll have them look at it and the acoustical consultant, just.
So we'll just see what they say about it. Put a condition on it.
It doesn't slam on and slam off. It just ramps up and ramps down on demand. It will save you money. Very quickly, probably within three or five years, you'll save you.
Much faster.
That's it, right?
Yeah.
So so does, I I know whether your other car wash sites or other other ones, they they kind of block off and you're not able to go and access. I mean, they're not, you're not having gates. Are these things being turned off? So when the when the when the facility's not open and operational, those. Those get, they get switched off at eight o'clock at night or whenever the time is.
Yeah, so I know whether they get switched off, I will tell you on all the other car wash sites that I've done, once the lights are out and it's closed down, I've never heard any instances where someone's vacuuming their car. The door parking lot. Um, I would, you know, I can follow up and get that information, um, but of all the car washers I've done. Uh, once the site is shut down, they've never had, I mean, outside of kids walking across the property and maybe throwing a, you know, bottle here and there. Because never, I've never heard reports from any of the municipalities, nothing near our operators, that people are pulling in there and vacuuming their car at night.
That's what I was getting at when I asked if they were twenty four seven. The other thing to note too is directly. To the south side there, there's a at that entrance way, that is residential down. That that vacuum would be the closest point. To that residential area. I think it would make sense to have some type of. Off hours, a a switch gets flipped because someone, I'm I'm not sure how, I think we talked about how they switch off and on, like you. I don't use them, but you take the hose off and they automatically start up. Some kid, right, who's throwing the bottles, picks one up, lets it go, it's running overnight, right, disrupting weavers, so. Just kind of operational things that. Think about. Yeah, any other questions or comments from the board?
I just have one question.
My real life experience is this, and I said it to our client. So I have a sixteen month old now, and she likes to throw a lot of stuff. And I, you know, usually don't vacuum your cars in the rain, and we've had a lot of rain the last couple of times. Um, I was able to vacuum my car without getting drenched because I'm a little little, well, it's my wife's car, like to keep the car clean. The reason why we're doing it is just for the customer experience. We want to make sure that they can vacuum their car, whether it's in some sort of rainy weather for those sort of instances. Or just keeping them out of the oppressive heat like we're about to experience in the next couple of days.
Do you have canopies, zonings, vacuums in other locations?
We do, um, and there's three locations that we're doing right now in Jersey where it's the same exact model. Where we are buying, um, or our client is buying, uh, gas stations, shutting down the gas operations, keeping the canopy. And putting the car wash, either it's a model right now, or there's a car wash already in there, just like the one we have here. Or they're actually constructing the car wash to go adjacent to the canopy and the convenience store.
I ask because, you know, as you travel Route one hundred through Euclid Township. That canopy is probably the biggest eyesore along that. Yeah, and the fact that you can't plant any vegetation out along there, deal would be wonderful if it disappeared.
Yeah. Well, it'd be wonderful to have the property line going to get chopped up by PennDOT too. That would help us out a lot. Yeah, yeah.
If I saw, you get past the hotel before you get to Lala.
Signage plan, I'll make it look real nice.
Strong. Yeah.
And it's not.
The water.
Okay, well, back, any other comments or questions? Public, anything? All right, does anyone, buddy, want to move forward with this?
Make a.
Do you have a motion to make a recommendation? Go ahead.
We can make a motion to. Recommend approval. Of all the the. One, two, three, four, five, six waivers as written. Tara, do I need to go through all of them? Okay. And the uh, as preliminary, final, and development. And the uh, in pursuant to all of E V Walsh's comments in the letter dated May twelfth, twenty twenty five. Uh, the Bowman review letter dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, H R G review. Letter dated March twenty first, twenty twenty five, their offer review letter dated April twenty first, twenty twenty five. S S M review letter dated June fourth, twenty twenty five, police department review letter dated March twentieth, twenty twenty five, and the farm martial review. Date in March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Uh, in addition, the applicant shall pay a fee in lieu of the construction of sidewalks and fee in lieu of additional plantings if necessary. And I would say. Work with the township's uh, sound engineer on um, a bidding by. The ordinance with the external blower. Or sorry, external vacuum.
I have a motion for a recommendation. Up.
Please wait around five. If you guys changed your mind, we did.
Okay. So just amend. It's okay. No, I'll amend it to just say the five.
All right. So we have a. A correction, and that's duly noted. And again, we have a motion for recommendation. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second. All in favor?
I.
Closed. Motion carries. Okay, go forward. Thank you. Mr. Fisher, how are you doing this evening? Good. I hear you want to talk to us.
All right, so. Uh, there was a draft where it is that was submitted to the township. That's what we're here to talk about. The ordinance is basically to give us the flexibility to allow for additional town centers within. The ordinance is basically to give us the flexibility to allow for additional town centers within. Now typically, you think about town center, you think about the Eagleview Town Center, where we have our concerts and things of that nature. I'd ask you to think about it more like a tool, right? It's a zoning tool. Because really with town centers, town centers was even provide flexibility, flexibility in different types of uses and connect, you know, and I'll say, well, really, frankly, it's different types of uses and Tara, can you flip over to the next, next thing? So Eagleview, seven hundred acres, you know, I'm sure most of you have heard a heard the story of Eagleview, but I do like to come in and like to tell people that we are a mixed use community, right? But when you look at six, seven hundred acres, we are, we have all the all the uses contained within Eagleview. But we are also a segregated community. You know, I think this map starts to show. You look at the light blue, that's kind of our residential area. You look at the yellow, that's that's our commercial area. And the area that's in white, that's up in Upper You, and that's also all commercial. So when we start to look at it, it really is segregated from a use standpoint. The only area that integrates a mix of uses is the town center. And it's it's a town center provides the ability from a from a use, one, it's residential, provides your residential. It provides for allows for retail. It allows for offices. It's kind of like, I'll say, a light zoning district, a pedestrian friendly type of district. The commercial uses within our office park, they're more, whether it's office, you know, large offices or R and D type of facilities like West Pharmaceutical, R and D facility. It's where you're integrating office and lab space together. And certainly when you continue up into Upper Euclid, that's where where more R and D and kind of lower buildings are either within Eagleview. You start to look at this map and, you know, when you say Eagleview seven hundred acres and what's shown in yellow is basically two hundred and fifty acres. Right? And then when you throw another two hundred and fifty acres in Upper Euclid, the bulk of our project is designated for commercial uses. So what the town center zoning does is it says when we have substantial properties, we can intermix different uses into these areas and within the commercial area. And that's really what we did when we came in and we did the town center too, right? And and it's a tool for us, right? It's a tool to make spaces more desirable. And by making spaces more desirable, we're keeping our office park healthy. Eric, can I, I'm kind of giving you the big picture here. You jump over to the next next screen for me? It kind of, I can summarize this. If you down to the bottom and you start looking at this chart. The charter on the left hand side, it's, it talks about prices per square foot. Right? And and office, office parks, right? So when the whole thing is you're trying to prevent office parks in general from becoming dead zones, right? I mean, I could give you a brief history on office parks if you want, but I mean, you think about it, the office, we had an office boom in the eighties, right? And Eagleview started in eighty six, created these office parks. Then you hit like early two thousands, millennials came along, right? The next generation, they said, I know what I'm going to locate in the city of Philadelphia, we're going to locate to our cities. Office parks took a big hit at that point. And then they took even a bigger hit when COVID came along and people said, I don't want to go to work anymore. Right? So how, this is a, this is, this is just not a Euclid Township thing. This is a national thing. It's how do you, how do you address that? How do you make sure that your space stays better than everybody else's space? And that's what I'm here to make sure we do is make sure Eagleview beats out Chester Brook, Great Valley, and every other corporate park that's in the area, right? When you look at that chart and you start looking at office prices per square foot and you see, you know, hey, you know, there was up at a hundred and ninety dollars square foot and and you look at today and it's down like our area says is that a hundred and forty dollars a square foot. I tell you, I I personally don't believe that because I know two office buildings right down the road here, they're selling for seventy dollars a square foot. It's been people aren't going, you know, it's like the space is empty and when you don't have a tenant, these the prices and the value of that building falls through your floor. We can't build an office building for seventy dollars a square foot. We can't build an office building for a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So it's like the value of the office building is destroyed. Chester Brooks, the energy over there on the on the on the right hand side. You know, they're over there right now. They're tearing down two office buildings in order to build warehouse buildings. I don't want to bring warehouse buildings into Eagleview, right? It's it's we are a traditional neighborhood community. You want to create spaces that are going to attract and keep the office buildings that we have full, and that's the intent. And that's what the the town center zoning ordinance does for us. We get to use it as a tool to intermix other uses within our corporate center to keep our spaces from people occupied, keep them at. Uh, Tara, can I get you a switch from over to the next page? The town gives in at all benefits. And actually, you guys are very much aware of benefits and makes you, you know, we've heard me talk about them. Fight two minutes. But I will, I will boil it down to really the last one. I kind of, I mean, value creation, healthy lifestyle, community engagement, all these things, all that, all everything that a town center or a mix of uses does to a to communities. I can boil it down to improve talent recruit. If you're a business owner, what is your most valuable component to your business? Doesn't matter what your business is. It doesn't matter what widget you make. Your most valuable tools are your employees. We have to, we have we have to make sure that Eagleview stayed the place. The Eagleview is a place that attracts the employees. That's what's going to attract the businesses. I'll give you an example. When we built West Pharmaceuticals, West Pharmaceuticals located from over off of Boarding Drive, right? Pretty ugly building, not a great, very poorly connected. I mean, it's just if you ever went inside that building and say, yeah, not a great office experience, right? They located in the Eagleview, beautiful building, walking trail over to town center. I had a kind of meeting with the head of their H R department and Dennis, I know you were here at the time, Rick Luzie, I don't know if you remember, he came to the township meetings. He's like, yeah, like I tell you, I was asking, I was like, hey, how's how's, maybe like your new, new facility? He's like, he's like, I love it. He's saying, because my job is so much easier now. He's like, the place sells itself. Eagleview is a tool for him to bring in his employees, right? That's why we are beating out our competition in Chester Brook, in Great Ballot, in down in Oaklands, and and people will pay on the Eagleview and to stay in our facilities. It's because of the place that we have. We just need to make sure we keep it there. Um, Tara, do you want to jump over to the next slide here? Uh, this is this this image kind of, this is an image looking over, if you remember that that's a passive house building right there, the sole kind of on roof of the sole, right? It's kind of looking through our our town center two and over into the town center. And you can see all the different color dots. That the the purpose of this image was really to show you the flexibility that town center brings, right? And all the different uses that get intermixed, all the all the color in different uses. I think blue is office, blue is office, malt pan, town, or teenager. Retail, the town center, it just is that that those different uses and the different uses bring the vibrancy, the vibrancy helps our office park. When we built this, this section right through here, the the first blue dial, little blue dial on left, we call that building or the reader building. Vacant. I mean, I don't know, it wasn't vacant, not a hundred percent vacant, but we had high vacancy rates within that building. We built the road, we intermixed it into the community. It's no longer hidden. Now it has a beautiful streetscape to road it, the road connectivity, the walking trail connectivity over to the over to where we hold our concerts. And now we're leasing space within that building and spaces we had at least in fifteen years. So there is value that it brings. And the whole purpose is to make sure that that building stays occupied. It's better for the tax base. Certainly, it's better for us as well, but they work together. Right?
For the phase two, was there any other new uses outside of residential? So was there not phase two town center two?
And town center two, no, it was all residential. But we intermixed, what we did was we joined properties together that incorporated existing built, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, yes. Uh, we have an office site available. We designate an office site at the intersection of one hundred, or really a commercial site, doesn't have to be.
It's the potential healthcare site, correct? That's the potential when you were talking for healthcare.
Say potential healthcare. Yes, yes, yes. So and that that site is your one, that site should be a commercial site. It's intersection of main and main for us, Eagleview Boulevard and Route one hundred. So, yes, okay. These are just, so couple of examples of things that, I mean, I'll say conversions that we've done and that we continue to do and to try to make sure that Eagleview is where it needs to be. The buildings up, the two, I'll say the comparison up on the upper right hand corner, that was a warehouse building. And it was literally a warehouse building that we converted into a daycare and a music studio and a therapist, so directly opposite of the town center. The uses work well with the town center. We've got the senior facility across the street, physical therapy, we've got, we've got great connections there. The daycare we probably could put into another daycare in Eagleview. I mean, I think there's a huge need for for daycare. And and the studio, a lot of studio and music studios, they're succeeding and they're doing well. And it's a use that fits within the town. I it's outside of town center, but it kind of ties us, helps keep us all tied together. So that's the purpose. I'd say really that's the purpose of the ordinance. And so, yes, that's what I am here for tonight.
Well, thank you for that.
So so I have a question to the extent that anyone, yeah. No, we just give us a little time to process.
That's the slide where you're showing is what the change will be.
No, well, this is, this is, so the image, I actually forgot about this slide. The image on the top is is how the zoning is situated today. The image in the bottom takes a look and it says, hey, what if we incorporated a couple, you know, areas on on the eastern side and converted those to town center? And not only that, but also the area that we call Eagleview Crossing, which is the portion that's that's of Eagleview that's kind of captured between Route one hundred to Pennsylvania Turnpike and Pennsylvania Turnpike Interchange. We're surrounded by three roads.
To hill.
So here's what the ordinance does. So those are the areas that, yes, that we are looking at and saying, how can we, we need to provide some life in these areas and how can we do it? The ordinance, what the ordinance does is it gives us the ability to come into the township and apply for a town center. What we would do is create a plan, a master plan of that area, come in, go through a conditional use process in creating this town center district. Right? That's when we would come up with concepts, building concepts, trail concept, connectivity concept, all these things and justify, whether it's justify sewer, justify water and really lay out our plan for this area. At that point, you know, you certainly you'll have questions and comments because now we're going to actually have a plan to look at. So this gives us the ability to come in and make that request for for that process. Then we can go through conditional use and then go through lane bells and all that.
So so changing this ordinance does not establish a by right usage? Okay. And then.
I can clarify, council citizens, from the White Commission, you can't change that at all. This would just create eligibility for land, and there are certain minimums we could to, and there is that excuse requirement. So for instance, in town center two, there was a listing office that there is a, as well. We still need that integration of uses. It would not all.
And then the second question is, in looking at the current ordinance, it explicitly says town center two is essentially the final town center. It's interesting wording to see in in an ordinance. Why is there a rationale as to why that's was the case then and and feel differently?
So that there being obviously market has changed drastically since that time. We're looking at a bunch of different options within Eagleview and it does seem to be, you know, the best to allow or commit to uses on on those properties, especially since, you know, office space is not really.
Yeah. So candidly, I love the idea of more town centers. What I don't necessarily am excited about is more high density residential in lieu of a true mix of retail restaurants to go along with the residential, which is why I asked that question about town center two. What, you know, what additional non residential space was put?
Is density limitation, you know, the number of units per acre. But they would need to comply.
But nothing that says you have to have for X number of units of residential, you must have X number of units of other spaces, right?
I think what you're talking about is how the town center is a term of art here, and it doesn't necessarily, people are going to envision Eagleview Town Center.
Correct.
And with the mix of multiple different uses, and that's not necessarily what
Right.
We're talking about.
Uh, so really, what we're what we're looking at are ways to feed off of the existing test. You want to integrate your product. We we want to integrate everything that we build over to that being town center.
I'm not suggesting it would make sense to try to make another one like that because it just.
But really, yeah, but what we do lack and we lack drastically on Eagleview Boulevard is activity, right? Pedestrian activity. So some of that does come in the form of housing and some of that could come in the form of of smaller retail uses to pull people in. So it's a combination.
Especially if they're in conjunction with each other.
Correct, correct, yes.
They do get the sense, I drive Eagleview Boulevard many times a day, but it it does feel like at risk. Just with like the lease signs and, you know, the availability, I can understand your perspective with the need to have other uses besides office. By the way.
Obviously, I was to. Yeah, when we talk about vacancies, residential or second point, we're sure.
Sure, from a a residential standpoint, there is. I mean, other than in in Hamilton, we'll release an upward or lease up stage, I believe, we're right here at eighty percent. So Hamilton, we fought Hamilton, that was the extension of Constitution Drive, right? So we're still in our lease up. I'd say by probably in about two months, that project will be full. So I'd say our portfolio in Chester County as a whole is, we're running ninety percent, ninety eight percent leased. Our season only a a point or so below. And from a office standpoint, if you look at us from a in from a general standpoint, I'd say we're running about eighty, commercialized eighty percent. Office is going to be a little less. Because there's other, you know, you got commercial you have within within that kind of office park district. It's not just office buildings. There are lab spaces and things of that and flex buildings that are contained within there. They're a little more flexible. Um, they're a little more flexible than an office building. An office building, not very flexible and that vacancy rate is a little lower. Hotels have been doing, we're back to, finally back to pre-COVID levels. So. Meaning seventy-five, you, you, you look, we target seventy, seventy-two, seventy-three percent, we're probably hitting seven-five percent. So we're doing well in the hotels.
So, so you mentioned one of the benefits of, you know, excellent residential space and the overall feel. Being that it attracts employers and those people live in, live in Eagleview, work in Eagleview. Do you have stats on percentage of, because you have a lot of residential now and.
Nah, you know, we tried to, we tried to get that and business, everybody was very protective of, uh. Their employees, no, no, we're not going to give you their address, right? And so, we tried to get that, our best guess would be. A little over ten percent.
And beyond that, you have the people that regardless of where they work, usually daycare center.
The daycare center is, I think is prob, is partially fed from our residents and also partially fed, fed from the odd people who run and work.
You know, that's a symbiosis that's going to always be in flux all, all the time.
Yes.
But when it's all that stuff is available, what I'm trying to understand is, you have a, uh. Existing yellow, let's just take the top half. That's where we are today.
That's where we are.
And existing yellow is the PCI there. When it's commercial.
Well, all of Eagle, all of Eagleview in Uglant township is PCID.
Okay.
Everything.
That's what.
We are your only PCID.
So the density is then regulated by some.
It's a.
Minor map that exists and somebody's.
The density is regulated through your, through the town center ordinance.
Yeah.
And that's a subsection within the PCI grid structure.
Would it be, uh. Inaccurate or would it be accurate to say that increasing residential increases demands on township services? Versus. Versus warehouses or office building, I know you didn't want warehouses, but versus office buildings and labs and manufacturers faces.
I don't know that that's true.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand all the whole dynamics of which, what we're talking about here. If, if you add eight thousand residents and break out. How many, how many units are you talking? For total build out of your proposed change?
We have, we are in a planning stage now, so I don't have a destiny count for you. This is the first step.
How about a, I'm going to range.
But less than eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
So there's your two and eight thousand.
Every site that's different, right? You cannot sit, you can't look at it and say, oh, well, there's ten acres and therefore you're going to, you can get this many units. It doesn't, because. Some places are going to be on Eagle Boulevard and then you're going to look at it and you're going to say, well, here I would have made sure that I have my, my retail component associated with this. And that's going to be a driver vector and other areas are going to be hidden or secluded. And that's going to have a different density, so it's not a, I'm not trying to be evasive, but it's not a fair question at this stage yet.
So, so.
But when we do come in with conditional use plan, we will certainly have that information.
Well, we, we, obviously you're going to want to see something even before conditional use, I'm wondering if see some sort of schematic, some sort of sketch plan. That gives us an idea of what, you know, what you're talking about.
That is, that is, that is the conditional use plan. So basically here's, so there's, you submit a, what we do. Is you submit a conditional use plan, a conditional use plan is the master plan for a town center. It's basically you say, here it is, here, here's kind of our thought. It's not, it's not to say that that's what you ultimately are going to do on your total, say, let's fill it thirty acres. But it's, it's the tool, the guideline that your principles that you've created. And to say, this is, this is the direction that we're going to go. And then just like now our town center, the, our initial town center in Eagleview. We, we started that probably thirty years ago. Thirty years it has taken us to build that town center and we're still not done, right?
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Well, yes, yes, I mean, it's great, it's, I mean, it's a beautiful town center, it's, it's really, it's. It has taken us that long to really make it safe, right? I mean, finally our retail spaces are full, Kimberding is coming in, the residential community within there. So.
Your senior living, you got every.
Yes, it is really, it's really a great town center.
I guess, I guess what I'd like to see, I mean, I've done a few of these over the years and I would like to see, even if it's just blobs. Even if it's just blobs on a, on a one by one hundred, right, scale. What you think you're going to put here, what you think you're going to put there. Not trying to hold you to numbers, before you do any, before you expand. The fees that he, you know, walls charge everybody else and now we're just like the.
Hate to disagree with you, but the ordinance is the first thing. The ordinance, it's the ordinance that was, all we're doing is taking the ordinance back to what it was when we actually started Eagleview. That is the only modification that I'm asking before the planning commission here tonight. Is to take the ordinance, put it back to what it was when we actually started Eagleview. Up until, you know, when we, when the ordinance was modified, what, three years ago, four, three years ago maybe, right? Then I have, what I have then is a tool to come into you with that concept plan and say, here it is, this is what I want to do. Here's my concept, here's my vision. Go through the conditional use process, you're going to say, hey, let's push and pull here, let's do this. We're going to make modifications and we're not working out.
If I'm trying to tell you not to be overly argumentative, but I'm trying to tell you, that ordinance was developed by people that are no longer here. The people that sit here now, both the planning commission and supervisors, are different type of people and a different type of world with a different understanding. Of how we develop properties and what they're supposed to look like, environmentally sound they are and all of those things.
But I can't give you that information, you're asking how? What is it going to look like? And then, but give me, here's, let me ask you this, do you agree that we have a problem today? We have a problem in Eagleview with the corporate center.
I have no idea, that, that's beyond my cap. Like, because I, I go through Eagleview, it doesn't, I, nothing on the face that bothers me.
Uh, I'll, I'll go with Neil, there's, there's never any cars I see in that main, um. Building right there at Eagleview and a hundred, there's never any cars.
There's no, you can drive around the office park and take a look.
There's, there's minimal with the office.
We have buildings that are fully leased with empty parking lots.
Correct, so is your intention then to redo those? Or is your intention to bring in more people to try to fill them?
Is tearing down an office building. The absolute last thing that I want to do is do that. I'm trying to set us up so that we do not have to do that. I do not want to be Chesterbrook where they're tearing down office buildings. So I'm asking you to give me the tools to do that.
What else are you considering? Because you said residential and office. Are you, because you said like this town center is going to be the heart of it still.
Oh, without a doubt.
But are there going to be sprinkled other businesses and other commercial aspects to it?
So we just, like, this is where I say, if you drive down Eagleview Boulevard, even come out. The two buildings right next to us, they're empty. Yeah, you got a, what was the name of that bank that came in and bought that, that one building? Worst mistake they ever did, they bought the whole building, I think they bought it from, uh, Jack Luck, right? They bought it, they're occupying the second floor, they can't get anybody in there. Right? I think certainly our buildings are nicer than those buildings, right? And I'm going to try to put those, any tenant who's trying to try to go in there into our buildings. He sold it, Eli did great.
Yeah.
You know?
What I don't want to see is that we end up, we end up. We, we think this is the cure and it's not the cure.
I think the market conditions are evolving so quickly.
What Neil's saying is the math makes sense to put up more units because the, he can't, that's ninety-eight percent rent or it'll be a hundred percent.
So.
I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm just saying out loud that, you know, that the statistics in his graph that he has shows that. And with the information he's provided, so. My only other question follow-up to the one I had was, are you guys considering, is your team considering, uh, maybe not open space? But maybe field space and parks to go with the whole town aspect or is it going to be strictly?
So I actually have some ideas as far as enhancements.
Okay, so you consider those enhancements?
I said, uh, they're, they are lands that we, Hank owns that would be enhanced. But I, I have some ideas as far as that goes as well.
Well, you guys just reconfigure some of the existing buildings or is this all new construction?
At this time, I do not want to reconfigure any existing building. I want to occupy our buildings and get tenants in there and keep them full. That's our goal.
So going back to the enhancements, and I know they're just, it's a concept of an idea right now, are those enhancements open to the public? Or just the residents of Eagle?
We have a friend that works at Twin Valley Coffee and I saw her last night and she just said that business is booming.
In town center.
And it's, yeah, and it's just, uh, this crazy amount of business and I, I think a coffee shop draws people.
So I will tell you, the Twin Valley Coffee was the best use we ever put in town center. Now, we haven't seen the effects of Kimberton yet, but.
I don't know, Rita's pretty, pretty high contender too.
Uh, they draw, I mean, so it's like for me. Okay, I go in there and get a cup of black coffee, right? They draw the youth in. It's the, it's the sugary coffee. And they, they do.
It's a trend.
Yes. I live twenty-five minutes away, my daughter will drive there to go get their coffee, I'm like, well, at least I get to see you. Can, can I get you lunch or something, right? But she'll drive to twenty-five past, through to Twin Valley, I'm like, you're crazy. But they do it.
My point, my, where I was going with that was if you did place some retail along Eagleview that would cool like a madness.
Right, and so, so with the field space, because like I, the other day we finished up the, the baseball season and we went to the Rita's in Eagleview. I mean, it just, it keeps, it keeps that draw.
It does.
But it keeps people happy too and it balances out. Units of residential and commercial and restaurants, you know, just goes with.
Question, is there an anticipation that there will be an adjacency of more space to the town center? As it phys, as it physically exists now, an adjacency of more businesses?
Oh, oh, no way.
Sim, symbiotic if what's there now to let more restaurants and small shops.
So that's what, I mean, that's what happens. I mean, in general, right, what happens is we keep your office spaces full and then you need to get those symbiotic uses that come. So, I totally agree with you about symbiotic reorganization.
I haven't used synergy or paradigm yet tonight, so I haven't shared you. Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, is, is, is there, is there a place? That is currently not built up adjacent to, I don't, I don't have a.
No.
I have a mental picture in my head about how the brick side sits next to what and that was.
No, what, well, there is, but it's across the street and it's opposite of like the Kimberton building. Uh, but that's where we have our assisted living facility and we're actually getting ready to start. The, so the, the expansion of that assisted living facility. So that property, even though it sits there and it's vacant, but it's not, it's planned.
It's planned, it's got. You might find another location though in some other spot that might become a little hollow as well.
So. Adjacent to town center?
Not adjacent to, I'm just saying, because if you go to more residential like you're talking about.
Yeah.
There's going to have to be some sort of bit.
But that's the, that's, see, that's the benefit of the town center zoning, right?
Right.
Is that, yes. You're, you're ideally, you're feeding your corporate center. You're feeding the retail, the additional retail that you're doing, that you're building, it's all functioning together. The thing that, the thing that people don't want today is they don't want to go into a corporate park that looks dead. Right? They want to go into a spot where they see people on the walking trails, they see people going to the coffee shop, they see people going into the office building. Nobody wants to see a parking lot that's empty and a five-story office building, right? And unfortunately, that's what we're up against.
If you do, just my own thought, like if you do go and you just build a bunch of more residential islands, it won't help your office case than that case. Because it won't do that, because it's going to be another segregated use.
So, I, I also agree with that a hundred percent, right? So that's a problem with like, say, Great Valley or Chesterbrook, is that what they're stuck with? Is they have a corporate center that is owned by all these other people, right? So then they got this little five-acre lot they're going to put in the outcome, well, I'm going to build on, on an apartment. But then you got a building right here and you, and you got the whole road network, you got. I, I've actually spoken to.
That's why I'm saying like.
Because they called me up and they're like, Neil, what do we do? They're going to fix this. You guys have Eagleview and it's great. I'm like, you guys, unfortunately, you have a problem because it's all segregated, all these different uses. And they, we got to create a national plan, they got a big, they got a much bigger issue. Centers than, than, than we're based. Fortunately, we still own most of the properties within Eagleview, right? We, we, uh. We certainly, you want to, always want to have some investors into your project, meaning like West Pharmaceuticals, they own there and. Kenty Nash, they own there, Citadel's owns there, but for the most part, we own a, a large chunk. Of, of what's left out there. And, uh, the benefit of that is that we get to go in there then and put trails and connectivity and integrate. Whereas other areas have that as an obstacle, we don't.
Is there any opportunity for infill and I mean that either? I mean, you've got parking lots, you're just heat islands out there. Don't do anything.
There are, yes. I do think that there are opportunities to kind of maybe push and pull all parking areas to, to make it more attractive and nice.
That's a, that's a.
It is, it's.
Curb a field type thing.
It is, a hundred percent.
So, good. Sounds like what.
I just have one more question, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Regarding the ordinance. So you, you had stated the board of supervisors at the time had drafted, had distracted and put in place, correct?
When we approved your plan there too. It was intended on there being no more. So we had changed the ordinance at that time, on the sentence at the end of.
Did, did, did that go through the planning commission, zoning and board of supervisors for their reviews? Did they all agree at the time?
Yes, because it was conditionally approved and, and conditionally. So. This request is to.
All right, that's why I'm asking, I.
Who originated that language?
Who originated?
Yeah. Yeah, who wanted that? Which, which body, where'd that come from? The planning commission?
The board, the board, board of supervisors.
Right.
It has now reconsidered. Putting that in.
I just want to know who, you know, kind of came up with this and, you know, what are we kind of, I don't want to say erasing, but.
We're going to target soon, Neil.
Crossing off. Not erasing, file, amending, amending. Kind of racing, filing, amending, 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 amen.
Amending a section in order to allow for years that are to develop within scale.
So, so the other change that was proposed was removal of the phrase in the first sentence about agreed upon by the board and puts it more on the applicant gets to decide, is that staying?
I think you're reading it back, backwards. I think it says, uh, the applicant basically and, and, and as agreed by the board.
Yeah.
Right, which?
So the one that says requirements covering town center uses, town center uses shall be permitted on a specific site set aside and designated for town center development by the applicant. That's the, that's what I was getting, yeah, because the original, the original version says by the board, doesn't mention the applicant, so, okay.
Yeah, so everybody from the same page, that means if they submit a plan, it doesn't mean.
Eagle. Town center. For each additional.
At the end of the day, we all have to be in agreement.
Exactly.
Do we have any other questions or comments? No comments? Do we want to make a recommendation? Do I have somebody to make a motion? Okay. All right, go ahead, thank you.
I'd like to make a recommendation or motion being made to recommend that the applicant proceed with the zoning ordinance amendment hearing. And motion may include any additional items that would be discussed. I don't think there's anything specific.
Does everybody go with that? Do I have a second?
A second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Go ahead, Neil, let's go forward.
Thank you very much.
And they all have to be passive.
Yeah.
Yeah, gas building is doing great.
Good.
I would tell you, it was certainly an experiment.
Yeah.
For us. But it's doing great. I actually think the thirty-two units was a kind of a sweet spot. I mean, I don't know what you've, what you have found in your experience, but it seemed like a, a sweet spot from an energy efficiency standpoint. And what we could provide from solar to help, because it's also, I mean.
As it gets bigger, your PV doesn't expand with it, so, yeah.
I'm sorry.
As the building gets larger, your roof area doesn't, and so you don't, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so it's.
Losing economy.
Yeah.
I mean, people, people love it.
Actually, my size for residents itself too, because if that size, people will know each other a little bit more, it's like a little, little village.
We experimented a lot. As far as, like even to the external style, I think I mentioned, uh, I'm going to say a recent.
Yeah.
So every, I'll let you guys.
Yeah, yeah. And we can discuss that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just with that, do I have any public comment, questions? Tara, can I ask a favor? Can you please read the announcements? I do not have them, um. Thanks very much.
Monday, uh, June ninth, when you start the Christian meeting at seven thirty, the panel house on June twelve. June fourteenth, the Halloween park random thing from eleven to one for everyone that would like to come. Um, Maggie is going to be there till thirty. It should be Monday, the zoning hearing board meeting, June eighteenth at seven P M. We do have two hearings. Uh, June twenty-first will be an equalistic training event, nine AM to twelve AM, uh, at Township. Willing here and then the planning commission meeting, uh, the next one. Our regular scheduled meeting would be, um, July eighth, seven o'clock. In addition, um, we do want to say that we are going to be holding, uh, public planning commission meetings on June seventeenth, June nineteenth and possibly the twenty-sixth, uh, from six to ten. And we'll be located at Grace First Church, which is at nine and five, West Devon Drive. Um, we are going to be discussing, uh, my old station farm property and the public meetings will be Ms. Rockwell, uh, Downing pound presenting both their conditional use plans that they had submitted on back in February, which is for the office, the manufacturing, uh, warehouse building, uh, as well as the editorial. And then they're also going to be discussing their zoning amendment proposal for the fifty-five. And their tentative, uh, plan, sketch plan for that to go along with.
Where, where are the meetings?
They're at Grace First Church.
Christ.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
Cross the high school. The East High School.
Oh, that's.
Across from the round seat, yeah.
So we are anticipating, uh, June seventeenth, uh, Rockwell will have time to present to the planning commission and we'll have our engineer there as well. So there will be, um, public dialogue, you know, between the commission and the applicant and council. Um, and then June nineteenth would be any follow-up and then public comment. For the president.
Sure, no, no public comment on the seventeenth.
None. So the township is playing, I'm getting something out tomorrow and websites, media. But it's to let you guys know that we did formally schedule.
I would just add, at those meetings, there's no action that we're looking for the planning mission to take. It's just, just an opportunity to kind of introduce to all all the discussion that has continued, please, over the last five, six months to the public, to the planning mission. Be able to get initial feedback and input. And, uh, and then figure out that for.
Basically just the informational meetings. Okay, thank you Tara for reading that. With that, do I have any other comments or questions from planning commission? Or from the public? Uh, with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, do I have a second? And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you very much for coming out.